Good evening. I'm Eugene Cushman, I'm the town meeting moderator. I'd like to call this special meeting to order. If you could all stand please and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Assistant Town Clerk, if you could read the call, please.
Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Lime to be held on September 7, 2016 at 7:00 PM at the East Lime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, special appropriation seventeen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund Thirty-Two Account, thirty-two dash sixty dash one twenty dash one hundred dash zero zero two, to an account established titled ICE Grapple Truck. Two, special appropriation Historic Preservation Technical Assistance Grant, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two for Phase Two Survey at the Samuel Smith Property. Three, special appropriation Certified Local Government Grant in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from Department of Economic and Community Development to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two to complete funding for Phase Two Survey at Samuel Smith Property. Date, East Lime, Connecticut, third day of August, 2016, and this was filed in the Town Clerk's Office, advertised in the day.
Thank you, Madam Assistant Town Clerk. As usual, go over the ground rules very quickly. Under Connecticut General Statute seven dash six, you must be an elector of the town or eighteen years of age, a U.S. citizen, and own taxable property on the grand list of ten, one, fifteen, in an amount of one thousand dollars or more. Under Connecticut General Statute nine dash three sixty, any person not qualified to vote but does vote at this meeting may be subject to a fine of not less than three hundred dollars nor more than five hundred dollars, imprisoned for not less than one year nor more than two years, be disenfranchised for all of the above. I appoint our registrars to be tellers and checkers if they're needed. If you wish to speak before this meeting, please come up to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Please do not carry on a dialogue amongst yourself, address all questions or comments through the moderator. If you're not eligible to vote at the meeting, please make that fact known before you make any comments before the meeting. We will only take up the items on the call. You may make a motion to approve an item, to disapprove an item, to reduce the expenditure of an item, but you may not increase in expenditure of any item. We'll take up the items in the order of the call. The first item is a special appropriation of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents from the Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund Thirty-Two Account Thirty-two sixty dash one twenty dash one hundred dash zero zero two to an account established titled ICE Grapple Truck. Do I hear a resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Sari, and I did not hear Husek and...
I did.
Oh, Mr. Rando. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion?
It's all that you can say, sir. Would you mind?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Folks, this is a fine example of towns working together. Mr. Braga will come up here and tell you the details of the purchase of this grapple truck, which is a one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar truck that we'll share with New London. They have an extensive need for this. We have a need for it, but we'll need it on occasion. They will keep the truck in New London, they will maintain it, service it, register it, et cetera, and by agreement, approved by both towns' lawyers, it's crystal clear that we will get it as needed, when needed, and that's all been worked out in a contract between the two municipalities. Again, this is, we're getting a great deal here because we're going into business with New London, who is a distressed community and qualifies for special funding, so again, our cost is seventeen thousand dollars, about ten percent of the value of a one-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar truck that Public Works could use for major projects. Mr. Braga will give us some details from the Public Works side.
Thank you, Mr. Pressler. Mr. Braga.
Mr. Nickerson covered most of the elements of this is a great opportunity to be able to share equipment. It always seems that everyone seems like towns all have to have their equipment, but no one can share, and this is a great opportunity where this state program came out and allowed us an opportunity to go in with another community. There is a need for us, whether it's going for bulky collection, whether we have storms, whether a lot of trees, like the other day, or just in general, large stumps or anything, and we have to send out our backhoe, our trucks, this piece of equipment is all in one. The driver goes out there, it's got a grapple on there, it's a crane, they can operate from the ground, so it's not like they have to climb up, they can take the crane, pick it up, put it in, and off it goes. So it's a great thing for the town to have, to have an opportunity to buy something for only ten percent of the cost of it, ten percent of the other community, eighty percent of the state of Connecticut. It seemed like a win-win program. We went to the Board of Slapman, went to the Board of Finance, and now we're looking to try to go forward so that we can use this in our town and have it accessible to us.
Thank you, Mr. Braga. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Rando.
Mr. Moderator, I'm going to try to keep my cool tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rando.
Ron Rando, 194 Boston Pearl Street, East Lime. I never heard of this before, my life with grapple truck, but it sounds pretty good. So, we're going to buy this with New London, and what stipulates, if we want to borrow, when can we borrow it? Can we borrow it if New London's using it? We can't borrow it, right? We have to wait. Who's going to pay for the repairs?
Excuse me, Mr. Rando, you want these questions answered one at a time?
To you, I'm asking you, yes.
Well, I'll find out what the town wants to answer them, but you want to do them all at once, or?
Yes, that's fine, yeah, fine with me, sir.
Mr. Braga?
Let me answer, ask his questions, and then we'll...
Okay.
Go ahead and answer them. Ask the question.
Ask the questions.
Oh. When, how is this, I don't know my own word, how is the schedule going to be set up, right? To borrow in this truck? If we, if there's an emergency, how do we go about getting the truck for what we need?
Service, repairs, and how we...
Yeah, service, and who's going to pay for the repairs?
Scheduling, as far as just the regular usage, we just got to give them twenty-four hours notice, and we go over and pick it up. As far as an emergency, you know, hurricane's rolling up, we just have to figure out the time, they have the three days, we have the three days, we share it.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good relationship with them.
And the pairs, they're doing all the routine maintenance, all the changes, all that stuff like that. When it comes to anything that's breaking, broken down in the next few years or something like that, there's a small, the Town of East Lime pays a smaller portion than the City of New London. It's a maintenance agreement we already have set up, it's in an agreement. I want to say we pay about thirty percent of it because they use it more than we do.
Don't run away, sir. What make is this truck, sir, Mr. Moderator? What company?
Mr. Braga?
I believe it's a Freightliner.
Freightliner? Is it diesel?
Yes, this is the truck here. This is the spec.
This is pretty good size, huh?
Yeah.
So you can pick up most any size lime or tree?
Mr. Braga, could you turn that around so we can catch it on the camera?
Hold on, zoom in a minute, I'll try. I'm pretty familiar.
That looks pretty good.
Let's just leave it at that.
I have one question left, Mr. Moderator. We're not going to bond this, are we?
Mr. Braga?
This is going to be paid out of our...
Yeah, this is taken out of the Capital Non-Reoccurring Account. Ironically, it was only a few years ago, and the City of New London pays eighty thousand dollars for two of our garbage trucks, which was put in a CNRE account just like this. So this is pay-as-you-go, it's in an account that's set aside for purchase of equipment. It's not being bonded.
That's all for now, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rando. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Drabek.
Yeah, John Drabek, eighteen Drabek Road. You've got to be kidding me. This is a Tonka toy. This isn't a crane. If you're looking at the height of this thing extended, you've got to be at least fifteen feet away from power lines to operate it. You're not going to be operating this near any house or on any street that's got a power line on it. There's certain legalities involved here, certain safety rules too, for the people operating it. It's a single-axle truck, you gross in probably around thirty-five thousand with the crane attachment on the back, this thing's going to be loaded at six ton. It's a joke. I thought we were getting a tri-axle, something that would lift something. No, this is a joke, I'm sorry. I don't, you can be warm and fuzzy with New London if you want, but come on, we're wasting our money here. You know, every time we have a big storm, you all run to Hartford, and you get money to clean up the mess. So we're going to have another truck, we're still going to run to Hartford to clean up the mess. We only spent it fourteen thousand dollars, I just assume the taxpayers save it. We don't do that many stumps, and quite frankly, the reason you have a lot of stumps on the sides of the road is because the town has been maintaining the sides of the road for the past fifty years, street line to street line, like they're supposed to. Trees get too big, they grow up through the power lines, they cut the tops off, it's a joke. We'd be better off operating with a better practice, keeping our roadsides clear, than playing with junk like this. I'm sorry, I can't support this.
Thank you, Mr. Drabek.
By the way, normally, when the town buys any vehicles and stuff, we have a capital assets program, they probably forgot about a long time ago, the truck would get a number. If this truck is owned by New London, we get no number. And if New London's in financial straits and sells the truck, are we out the use of the truck? Are there any other municipalities sharing with this truck? Any answers?
It's not owned by New London, it'd be owned by East Lime and New London, so it's not that if something happens with New London, we'd be out of truck. It's a shared endeavor with this agreement. As far as that truck, that's been used in a lot of different storm events. I remember a few years ago, that's the kind of trucks that they were using, it's not a Tonka truck. When we, actually, one of the things, all the trimming's going on in town, a lot of times they drop all the large tree trunks and stuff like that, it would be a big help, it would be a big help to pick up other things, so we, our department seems to have a need for this kind of truck, not every day, and certainly, New London's the one that's using this for bulky waste, but it is a need, and we're paying ten percent of the truck, and they're maintaining it. So a lot of times, you know, we ask for trucks, the whole cost of truck, we're asking, you know, this thing is only ten percent of the cost of a brand-new truck, to be able to have a greater capability for our department.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Drabek?
Yeah, generally, New London only supports about thirty percent of its own budget. It gets seventy percent of its supporting revenue from outside, meaning the state, so we're actually supplying a little more behind the scenes to buy this truck. I'm, you know, we ought to be warm and fuzzy, fine, but we're already paying for a lot of New London's expenses. East Lime generates a good portion of its expenses from inside, more than half, especially when you include education, but no, I can't buy this, this just doesn't quite work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drabek. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Schultz.
Mike Schultz, Lovers Lane, East Lime. This vehicle, do we actually have some specifications that, through you, Mr. Moderator, that could be shared with us as to its load lifting capacities, and what, you know, give us an idea of what it'll actually lift? I mean, if it's big trunks, little trunks, trunks, three-foot by ten-foot trunks, what it actually would do, as opposed to maybe just a brush? Thank you.
Mr. Braga, you want to answer that question?
That's the one question I wanted to ask.
There is a spec right now, if you just give me one second, I can go through it to get that capacity, okay?
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard while Mr. Braga's looking up the specs? Mr. First Electman, you want to entertain us for a while?
It has an extended lift capacity of twenty-seven hundred pounds at twenty-seven feet. I can share the capacity with you.
Thanks, Mr. Braga, okay. Anyone else like to make any comments? Seeing no hands, then we're going to move the question. All those in favor of a special appropriation of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and thirty cents from the Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund Thirty-Two Account, thirty-two dash sixty dash one twenty dash one hundred dash one oh, one zero zero two, to an account establishing, established title ICE Grapple Truck. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the resolution carries. Next item on the agenda is a special appropriation Historic Preservation Technical Assistance Grant, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservations to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two for Phase Two Survey at the Samuel Smith Property. Do I hear a resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Sari? Didn't hear a second one. Mr. Slerna? Would anyone like to be heard on this matter? Mr. First Electman?
This is a, first of all, we are blessed in this town to have people who are so dedicated to different causes, and one of them is Luanne Lang, who is really just spearheaded this program with her friends over at Samuel Smith House. This particular program, this grant, comes with a matching requirement, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm on the right one. The next item we're going to hear in tonight's meeting is the matching grant part, but believe it or not, we've got two grants. So the bottom line is zero dollars will be coming out of East Lime. Yes, it's taxpayer money. Yes, it's coming from the state or federal or all sorts of other resources. None of the money going to the Historic Properties Commission tonight is coming from East Lime taxpayers directly through our budget or through our bonding. So that needs to be established and be crystal clear. Nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars is the first grant, I believe nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars is the second grant. That is the total amount of somewhere in the nineteen thousand dollar and change range, and that is money that will be coming to East Lime. So, Luanne, I know you want to speak on specifics on this grant, you may want to speak for the second grant too, even though we'll be voting separately, so you don't have to get a quiet, so we don't have to take four steps separate.
Luanne Lang, one sixty Pennsylvania Avenue, Historic Properties Commission. Yes, these grants were written, I should've worn high heels. These grants were specifically written because Phase One was finished last year, and they found some interesting pieces of information on the land, and we know that there were questions about the house itself. So in doing this, we went first to the, actually, the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, which is a nonprofit that received its money from several places, and their grant was approved at their board meeting for nine thousand, six hundred and fifty, and so that would be number two. And then, because the town is a certified local government, one of forty-three in the state of the one hundred and sixty-nine municipalities, we were then able to match it at no cost to the town with a like amount from that fund. And so these are important because this is going to, what's going to set the credentials for what that piece of property becomes and be a foundation for being able to go for other money to help restore and maintain the property.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Rando.
Mr. Rando, East Lime. Mr. Moderator, I think I was here spoke about this when they were talking about the town was getting involved in buying this, and I asked a particular question about who's going to maintain and support this place, and I was told by the people that were pushing this thing that they were going to handle it and take care of it, there would just be a few repairs that are building the house, I mean, and I told them, well, when you start tearing it apart, you're going to find out you've got a lot more repairs, but they were supposed to take care of this themselves. And I am a great, great believer, I am against grants because as far as I'm concerned, you don't grab it and pull it down from a tree. Its taxpayers hard-earned money, and we sure in hell pay a lot of taxes in this town. But I figured sooner or later, we were going to come back, and they were going to ask for money from the town or from somebody. And here it is, right here, we need money to, and what is, Mr. Moderator, what is Phase Two Survey? What does that consist of?
Would anyone like to answer that question?
Phase One was done last year, and that included going around the acreage, and certain, they did certain digs, and they had certain prescriptions within the archaeological field as to how they do this, it's prescribed by their certification, and during that time, they identified parts of the property that had more interesting pieces of it outside the lower cellar door. They have uncovered, if they go down three feet, they have appropriately identified that it's property from the sixteen hundreds, and this is what they're mostly interested in going back for. And I'd like to perhaps suggest that there is no money coming from this town for this grant.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Mr. Rando, you have anything else?
Just that, have they found any historical artifacts on the property or anything?
The answer is yes, apparently have.
A report was filed by PAS, which is the Public Archaeological Survey Team, and I can't tell you how many pages there are, I wish I had brought the report with me. In it, they have identified, and they very carefully, as they do their digs, they identify where it's coming from, what it is, they took it and cleaned everything, and they, we do have artifacts, and we're looking for more.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I beg to differ with you one way, that this money coming from the town, I sure pay a heck of a lot of taxes to the Town of East Lime and the State of Connecticut, so I figure I'm paying some of this money, and that's what I complain about when this deal starts to go through. Sooner or later, the taxpayers are going to pay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rando. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Betty Mahon, fifty-three Cory Dogg Road, Nyhantec, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the Samuel Smith House, and I would just like to respond a little bit to the fact that this might be unworthy. The next phase is going to discover what parts of the building were put up at what times. It will be of major historical significance to the Town of East Lime, and will be a drawing point. In our last major tour, when other houses were involved, we had many people from all around the state coming to look at the house, and they were amazed at what they saw.
Thank you, Ms. Ma'am. Mr. First Electman?
Yeah, I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I do feel I need to respond. When we did buy this property, there was some controversy, and there was some promises made by this group that we wouldn't, there wouldn't be a burden to the town and the town budget, but it was crystal clear that this group was going to go after grants. We formulated the Historical Properties Commission and was recognized by the state so that we could get grants. I too recognize that all this grant money is coming from our pockets, and it's just coming from the other pocket, and when they stop giving grants out, we'll stop going for them. But if they're giving money out, and it's going to go to some community, I hope that it's ours, because the money's already there, and it's going out the door to some community, and so we have grants coming in at Public Works, and we have pilot money, and we have the educational grant, the ECS funding, we have money coming from the state from all sorts of different income streams. Yes, it's our money, yes, it comes from us, but if they're giving out grant money, I think it's a responsibility of these commissions, certainly my job, to go out and get East Lime's share, if you will, what we're qualified for. I do hope that the state legislature turns this thing around and shuts the spigot off in many different ways, whether it's federal or state. They do give out too much money. The state budget is way too big, but we should go after the grant money that is, first of all, rightfully ours, that we qualify for, and that they're going to give out to someone. And that's my statement.
Thank you, Mr. First Electman. Would anyone else like to be heard? Mr. Drabek.
Yeah, it's kind of like hogs at a trough. Unfortunately, especially with a biannual budget, they tax us to give us. He opened a can of worms, so that's the way it is. Enough. Now, I love his history, I love the preservation, I love digging, I like that stuff, but we were told this house was going to be self-sustaining. It's been four years, I want to know how much money they've raised towards self-sustenance. In other words, it's nice to say we found old nails, horse shoes, a little bit of history, but it's time for the taxpayer to hear, hey, we're self-sustaining, in five years, we're going to be able to afford these digs ourselves. Have they set up a fee structure for people to walk through the house? Is it becoming an attraction? If it hasn't, it's become something else, and being as taxpayers' money involved in the state of this economy, I've got to scratch my head and wonder what we've set ourselves up for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drabek. Yes, ma'am.
When the state helped fund the purchase of this house, it went with it a twenty-year lease, easement, and that easement is part of the easement language, is we can, they cannot charge a fee, it must all be by donations to go through the house. And there is actually logically a question among other kinds of houses in other communities, whether you get more by having a fee, or whether you get more by having an open donor. For example, on one of the open house Sundays that they maintained this, and they have to be open twelve days a year by the easement language, and actually, they had one visitor on one of those Sundays this summer that donated three hundred dollars. And so you don't get that a lot and often, and from locals, and so this is an advantage. Their budget, I can't speak to that specifically, but they have maintained it, and they have done a lot of work. Rotary has helped fund things, the community garden there has been funded by Rotary, and so there are things that they are working within the community. So their budget right now does not allow them to do a major project, but they are looking, and again, the credentials that would be provided by these grants is what's going to give them the leg up when they compete with other communities, because this house indeed is special, goes back to sixteen eighty-five, and there's this mystery fireplace in the cellar that shouldn't be there, and they're trying to figure out why. And this part of this grant too is architectural, I'm going to say survey, that's the wrong word, anyway, so they can go in, and as Betty mentioned, they can go ahead and document which parts of the house indeed were from certain places, because there's disagreement with that also in the credentials.
Thank you, Ms. Lang. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll move the question. All those in favor of a special appropriation Historic Preservation Technical Assistance Grant, nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two for Phase Two Survey at the Samuel Smith Property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the resolution carries. The last item on the agenda is a special appropriation Certified Local Government Grant in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the Department of Economic and Community Development to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two to complete funding for Phase Two Survey at the Samuel Smith Property. Is there a resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Sari, is there a second? Ms. Lang? Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Why don't we just vote on...
All right, that's a good idea. All those in favor of a resolution of a special appropriation Certified Local Government Grant in the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from Department of Economic and Community Development to CNRE Fund Thirty-Two to complete funding for Phase Two Survey at Samuel Smith Property, please signify by saying aye. at Samuel Smith Property, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the resolution carries, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Mr. Drabek and Mr. Rando. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The meeting is adjourned.